Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Board of Education Regular Meeting. It is June 12, 2024. Are we in compliance with open meeting laws?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. Can you please call the roll?
Hess.
Here.
Selagi.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Wyman.
Here.
Carolyn.
Here.
Whit.
Here.
Herzog.
Here. Thank you. And if you'd all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And now, Dr. Davis, if you would read the Land Acknowledgement, please.
Yes, as we gather today, we acknowledge that in Oshkosh, we are on the ancestral homelands of the Hochunk Nation and Menominee Indian Tribe of Wisconsin, who lived along the western shores of Lake Winnebago, Wisconsin's largest freshwater lake entirely within its borders. We acknowledge these indigenous sovereign communities who have stewarded this land throughout generations and pay respects to their elders, past and present. We welcome the duty and opportunity to share stewardship in these lands.
Thank you very much. Approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes to the agenda?
I do not.
Then we will accept the agenda as written by acclamation. Okay, retirement recognition. I have two retirees on the list for tonight. The first one is Amy Ruder. Ruder, Roder, Ruder. I want to pronounce it correctly. Ruder, I think. Writer. Writer. Boy, I didn't see that. Okay. IST in mathematics at Jefferson and has been with the district since 1990. And Pamela Garrettz, an ESOL teacher, Roosevelt, 1995. Dr. Herzog.
Thank you. I love your anticipation. These, I've known these as exceptional educators in our district. I've been in their classrooms in previous years when I worked in the school district central administration. Amy has been not only an IST, but she's also been a very solid elementary teacher in her history here. Pam Garrettz was someone I worked with when I was involved with the English Language Learner Program. She has spent, if not all of her career at Roosevelt, a very large piece of that. And so, as with all retirees, I like to wish them a long and healthy and happy retirement and thank them for the contributions they've made to our students, families, staff, and our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Thank you very much. Year-end celebrations. And what a year it was. We celebrated a lot. We celebrated retirees. We celebrated graduations. We celebrated student achievement, alumni achievement. We are so lucky to be in a district that continues to celebrate all the wonderful things that are happening within our district. I think, for me, graduation, of course, the retiree dinner is one of my favorite nights of the year. We had 56 retirees with over 1,300 years of experience. How do you replace that? I don't think you do. So, that is always a loss, but I look at the teachers we have and I look at their enthusiasm and I know that we will continue to grow and thrive. The graduations, we had many graduations and they were very, it's interesting with each graduation how they are similar, but they are so different. And you could really feel the flavor of each one of the schools come out. I'd like to just give a shout out to the entire community for coming to support all the graduates. There were full houses at KLF and it was very, very exciting to see. So hats off to all the graduates and I hope they find a wonderful future. They certainly have been set up for it well with the Oshkosh Area School District. Thank you very much. And superintendent's report.
Okay, well, we'll stick on, start with sticking on that graduation theme for our highlights as we're getting kicked off. So, once again, we want to congratulate the Oshkosh Area School District class of 2024. I wanted to take a moment to share a spotlight video that was put together by Hannah Dawson out of our Communications Department. Make sure that she gets credit for this. That captures the joy and the pride of our graduation ceremonies. So, I wanted to just take a couple of minutes just to watch this video and enjoy what our ceremonies were all about.
Today, we celebrate the end of the journey and the beginning of another one for the class of 2024, celebrating the culmination of years of hard work, dedication, and perseverance.
Take these feelings of today, find your specific passion, and make the world a better place. We need each and every one of you seniors. Your strength as a class is in the diversity of ideas and interests that you bring to communities that you will serve.
Remember, success is not always about being the best or the brightest. It is about being willing to keep going when the going gets tough.
Work hard, respect others, be great parents, but most importantly, show your love to this world.
Find a way to serve and lead your community. And know that on a daily basis, those needs change without warning, which is why we need each and every one of you to be ready for your goals.
Don't ever stop believing in yourself, your abilities, or your goals. The only person who can hold you back is yourself. So, don't give up so easily on what you want in life.
You have overcome the monkey road to get here with all the dips and turns, and you have changed so much along the way. Be our close freshman who first got on the bus anymore. And that will be a hope that helps us to be the future changemakers of tomorrow.
It is now our continued responsibility to nurture success and achievement with others in our community. We must cultivate a strong family of friends, teachers, mentors, community members with the same passion and dedication that was given to us for the last 18 years. So, one day, our teacher communities can thrive as much as we have.
We love you and we're going to listen. You will always have a home to return to and people that will always have your back. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in congratulating the class of 2024.
All right. So, again, I want to give credit to Hannah Dawson for making me cry at a board meeting again. So, thank you very much. But that is all her work. And she's done great work throughout the year, but just wanted to make sure, give her a shout out. So, all right. So, second is, was mentioned earlier, but I want to reiterate just congratulations to our retirees. And we had our 25-year employee award winners. So, before the end of the school year, we came together to honor both of those groups. Again, this year's retirees included 56 individuals and had 1,236 years of combined service, which is amazing to our district and community. We also celebrated 18 employees who have served the district for 25 years. So, to all of those honorees, thank you for your countless years in nurturing young minds and leaving a lasting impact for generations of students. So, it was a great, great celebration. During our annual recognition event, we celebrated our Friends of Education Award recipients, our 2024 Friends of Education Award recipients. Your support and advocacy for quality education has inspired all of us. We lifted up two individual Friends of Education recipients, Amy Hardy and Jeff Szuski. So, Amy and Jeff are mentors and volunteers for our first LEGO League and Wave Robotics program. And as you may remember, both of these, those student groups made it to Nationals and World Championships, or World Championships this year. So, just doing a phenomenal job. So, thanks to Jeff and Amy for all of their hard work. And then, our Corporate Friend of Education Award went to the Oshkosh Chamber of Commerce in recognition of their exceptional efforts to bridge the gap between local business and public education, their efforts to strengthen community-school partnerships while enticing, enriching students' academic experiences and future prospects. So, there are so many individuals and organizations that are making a difference for our kids. We're so grateful to be in a community of such great supporters. So, thank you, everyone, and congratulations to those recipients. We are excited to invite the entire community to the grand opening celebration of the Reed Elementary's newly renovated playground and outdoor learning spaces on Tuesday, June 25 from 5 to 7. The Remarkable Revitalization Project represents an incredibly, incredible community-led fundraising effort focused on providing Reed Elementary students, families, and neighborhoods with an engaging environment to play, learn, and grow. Festivities on June 25 will include a real fire truck on site, meet and greet with Marshall from Paw Patrol, and firefighter John from the Oshkosh Fire Department, free face painting, free Kona Ice, free books from the United Ways Dolly Parton Imagination Library, and ample time to provide the amazing new playground with a live DJ. So, it's going to be exciting. Please come out and join us if you can. There are so many good people in the world and in our district, and we wanted to lift up one of them tonight. So, we have an exceptional example to share of a caring adult in our district going above and beyond to connect and encourage our students. Eddie, who's a graduate of Oshkosh West High School, now works as a school bus driver. And as we all know, bus drivers are some of the most important people in the adults, important adults in our kids' lives. A parent recently emailed that Eddie attended their daughter's dance performance after the show, and after the show, he talked with them and provided the most encouraging and kindest, touching words to her. This simple act of kindness and support meant the world to the student and to her families. So, students like this showcase the profound impact that our caring adults can make on our students' lives. Eddie is an example of one of our dedicated individuals who are, were fortunate enough to have worked for our school district, to having with our children and having interactions with our students every day. So, his commitment to building positive connections extends far beyond just driving a bus route. So, congratulations to Eddie and a job well done. Last month, Oshkosh West students enrolled in Career and Technical Education courses and had a few unique visits from community professionals and from healthcare to the automotive industries. Representatives from six local healthcare organizations held meet and greets with students interested in gaining hands-on experience in the hands-on healthcare experience while in high school. The experts also hosted mock interviews for students planning to pursue careers as certified nursing assistants. Additionally, the Oshkosh, two Oshkosh West alumni from Quality Truck Care Center met with students enrolled in the automotive technical education classes to talk about pathways for students to pursue careers in the automotive industry. Students were also able to inspect the state-of-the-art dump truck and learn about diesel technology. We appreciate these local organizations visiting Oshkosh West and providing such an enriching learning opportunities for our students. Last month, seven career-driven young people with different abilities graduated from Project Search Program. Project Search is a nine-month special skills training internship with Ascension Mercy Hospital. During the ceremony, students reflected on their experiences within the program, each sharing a quote that they felt applied to them at the time and the experiences from learning at Project Search. We're so proud of them and excited to see what these young adults can do and continue to succeed in our community. So, congratulations to all of those graduates. Last week, K through six students from across the Oshkosh Area School District and the Oshkosh community came together for four exciting days of enrichment program called Camp Invention. Each summer, Camp Invention, a National Inventors Hall of Fame program, encourages children to bring their ideas to life through a series of STEM activities and challenges. This year's sessions included a Hydro Drop, In the Game, Let's Glow, and Prototyping Studio. We appreciate the talented staff who made this learning possible. It is so great to see the curiosity and excitement as our students are engaged in the hands-on STEM learning to kick off their summer. And with that in mind, our summer school programs are also off to a sunny start. We have high school students in the Bridge to Success Programs Creative Writing Class took advantage of the recent sunny weather and moved to the outdoor classrooms. This creative writing class helps students who receive English for speakers of other language services gain additional English credits and brings them closer to meeting their graduation requirements. Students have the opportunity to compose various types of narratives to develop real or imagined experiences or events in their writing. And as a reminder, that each month, we have new episodes of the Mission Keepers, a district podcast, available. The latest episodes will feature Brett Wolf, who's a custodian at Oshkosh West High School, Carla Heisinga, a first-grade teacher at Emmeline Cook Elementary School, and Shelley Wilcox, an assistant cook in our food service department at Oshkosh West High School. Tune in to hear how the Oshkosh Area School District employees are finding joy and empowering lives. Our Free Meal, Free Summer Meals Program kicked off last week, providing free breakfast and lunch meals to all kids 18 and under at multiple locations across the city. This program helps fill the nutrition gap for students when school meals aren't available. Free breakfast and lunch is available at Jefferson, Oak Lawn, Bell Phillips, and at Oshkosh North High School. The details are on the screen and available on our website. And finally, a list of some of the places that I've been at, both in some training opportunities as we finished up the school year and/or any of the year events. So, and that concludes our superintendent's good news report for tonight.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fox and Mr. Concentine, a Menominee Elementary School update.
Thank you and good evening. Menominee Elementary School is on schedule and on budget, making significant progress. As you can see from the road, just a reminder, what is not written in here is that substantial completion is at August 8th time date contractually, and we're only two short months away from that. So, it's pretty exciting to watch the site wrap up. We're completed in the last 30 days. Area A, as a reminder, is your grade two through grade five. Classroom cabinetry is complete. Second floor classroom hallway flooring is complete. Area B, the gymnasium floor installation, including all painting and floor finishes, are complete. Area C and D, which is C is your administration, D is going to be your kindergarten and first grade wing. All mechanical, electrical plumbing roughens are complete. In that same wing, drywall's installed and paint is ongoing right now. Windows have also been installed in that area. Building exterior, all metal panels have been installed. The only penetrations really you see left unfinished in that building at this point is anything Myron needs to access to building itself for construction. So, some pictures to support what we just talked about. Upper left, Area A, we talked about these little nooks. I think Nate said there was five. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, there are five of these nooks. This is one that they were just about to complete. You can kind of see the colors and how they move throughout each of those little nooks throughout the school for the children. Area A, center top, is an example of a collaboration space. You can see the different types of flooring colors that we use in those spaces. Area B, upper right, is the terrazzo flooring being installed in the cafeteria. Area B, lower left, is a gymnasium, finished. Area A is the other collaboration space. There are four in that area, first and second floor. And Area D, lower right, is the drywall in the kindergarten first grade wing, kind of giving you a step back, if you will, a little bit of what Area A looked like before we had paint installed in the walls in this wing. Pictures of site, upper left, Area C and D, east side. So, this is a picture from Hazel, looking at your kindergarten entry and administration library on the second floor. Area A, north, top center, is going to be your second through fifth grade. Upper right, Area B, east, cafeteria curtain wall. Lower left is Area D, west. That is going to be, again, the, from the Hazel Street side, Hazel Grove, that is going to be your kindergarten wing from what would be a future parking lot. Center bottom is Area A, south, in the courtyard area as well. And last but not least, lower right is where the courtyard is currently. That is about to become your playground, starting next week. We just spoke to the playground installers at Lee Recreation, so you'll see probably in about a week and a half, slide swings and various playground equipment set in place, awaiting port and place. So, over the next 30 days, we expect cafeteria flooring terrazzo to be complete. In fact, the color is complete on the north half of the cafeteria. They're going to be finishing up around gymnasium and moving toward a secure vestibule entrance. Area C, second floor, cabinet installation. Area D, ceramic tile in the restrooms is ongoing and will be completed in the next month. Area D, again, painting is underway in all the classrooms for the kindergarten and first grade wing. Building exterior, soil for grassy areas. You've seen the gravel in the courtyard areas. Gravel will be imported for the drive lanes. In fact, as I drove by, you could see now the concrete sonotubes are standing for the lights. You can kind of see the new light locations as well in the parking lot and the drive circle. Building exterior, concrete installation for sidewalks, and they were forming up sidewalks on the Hazel Street side as of this afternoon. So, things are moving along quite quickly. Again, finishing touches are underway, but everything is looking great.
Amazing.
Any questions you have about the project?
It's exciting.
Very exciting.
Looking good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Nihans, Budget Variance Update.
Good evening. The Budget Variance Report is with all of our finances through the month of May. We have shrunk the projected deficit. Right now, it's sitting a little bit less than $200,000 is what we're projecting for the operating funds. Again, operating funds are Funds 10 and 27 combined. For that, our Food Service Fund is projecting out a surplus. We have a slight year-to-date deficit right now, but as we continue to get our revenue to come in, as that goes through the end of the fiscal year, that should end up with a surplus in that fund. Our Recreation Department, Fund 80, is also projecting out a surplus. They're currently a half a million dollars ahead, and we are still going strong in there. Quite a bit of the Fund 80 is also due towards increasing programming and increasing revenue from community programming that we are really seeing right now. A couple of highlights that I wanted to mention in there, the actual year-end, even though our fiscal year is done June 30, we won't have actual final numbers until mid to late August. It takes quite a while, and our health plan being self-insured, we can't reconcile that out. We start that process in mid-July, and that takes about two to three weeks to just reconcile that part. And we do have a significant amount of expenses that are going to be coming in in June. We're anticipating just under $40 million of expenses as we close out contracts. June is also the month where all of our aid and all of our open enrollments and voucher payments, all of that happens in June. So, there's quite a bit of expense activity that's going to be happening in the next, well, right now, and for the next two weeks. Another thing I wanted to just highlight, on the last page of your graphics that were included in the materials, was actual, the planned trend, and just kind of showing you the actual amounts of our expenditures. And this is just for Fund 10, our general fund, and how that compared month by month with what our five-year trend would be. Again, we've talked several times over the past year, we've been trying to intentionally shift our trend, five-year trend, up as we try to align our expenses more towards the semesters and early part of semester in the plan year. So, as we go through the years, we will be hoping to see that green trend line be a little bit different than what it currently shows. But at this time of year, as we've gone through almost the entire year, thought it was a good thing for the board to see and really see on a month-by-month basis where we've hit actual to trend. Are there any questions at all on the report or the finances?
I really appreciate your graphs. They're very easy to read and convey a great deal of information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nihans.
Thank you.
Achievement Gap Reduction. Dr. Brown.
Thank you. And I also invited Beth Galiyazi. She's going to represent the principals of the AGR schools. And we realize this is a written report, so we're not going to go through the whole slideshow, but we did think it was important to bring this to you because, or do it a little bit more officially, because last year, we used the PALS as an early literacy screener. And this year, for kindergarten, we use Teaching Strategies Gold. And so, just wanted to clarify some information regarding that. So, our AGR schools, Jefferson, Roosevelt, Washington, and Webster Stanley, utilized all of these strategies, class size reduction, instructional coaching. And when class sizes went above 18, we also had tutoring happening. And then, the literacy goals are as seen here, but you can see our Teaching Strategy Gold assessment by May 2024 focused on these four objectives. And so, just wanted to share with you an example from Washington School because it looked a little bit different. So, you'll see in kindergarten, we have noticing and discriminating discrete units of sound. That's the objective that falls, or that falls under the demonstrating phonological awareness, phonics skills, and word recognition. And then, along within that, there is a continuum. So, Teaching Strategies Gold is actually an assessment that we use for birth through grade three, or it can be used for those grades. We're using it in the 4K program and then as well as kindergarten. So, when you see Goal Four and Goal Eight, those are actually getting more sophisticated upon each other. So, for example, Goal Four is about showing awareness in separate syllables and words. So, students just need to be able to hear on the syllable. So, rye in. So, they need to be able to hear that. As we go into Goal Eight, then they need to verbally blend, separate, and add or substitute individual sounds. So, that could mean when a student, if a teacher is working on hat, they might ask them to substitute an oh or the ah sound to get, and the students would have to be able to say hot. So, I just wanted to be able to clarify that that's not a growth from beginning of the year to end of the year because there's sophistication within that. But you can see that our students have maintained or have grown knowing that the skills get more sophisticated as we go along. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And then, what other questions you might have? We were excited about the growth that happened in the AGR schools, both on the Teaching Strategies Gold. And then, you could see that we used I Ready for the first time this year in grades one and two. And then, you could see the results for each school. But Beth is here. If there are specific strategies or things you'd like to hear about too. Yes, Tim?
Boy, the Sage Program and now this incarnation of this has been something I've been involved with for quite a while. And I would ask kind of two generalized questions, and then I got a number of specific questions for you. But first, just what did we do differently this year versus last year? And then, how do I know this program is working? That's kind of my generalized questions for you.
So, when you're talking about what we did different from this year to last year, specifically with our AGR schools or as a system as a whole, because there's a lot of things that I think you can't separate.
The AGR program is kind of what I'm interested in. Other, I mean, I see you're telling us what we selected for assessment tools
Correct.
Has changed. I'm kind of thinking like intervention-wise, I understand class size reduction and the different strategies that are kind of there. Did we do anything substantially different in terms of the intervention in the individual classrooms for this order?
I think in general, one of the biggest changes that the teachers implemented this year was the high-leverage literacy practices, which helped to see some of this growth. We also used a few rounds of RISE, which is like a targeted reading intervention program. We did that at Merrill and at Webster, which helped to really close that gap. And then, what else were not done differently?
Yeah, our instructional coaches. And this is across the district. Our instructional coaches are doing student-centered coaching, where in the past it was more of a teacher-centered. And so it's really looking at that data piece in order to move things in the classroom.
And then the principals at each of the schools, this year, we started holding weekly meetings with our instructional coaches where we looked over the data that they were going through in their student-centered coaching cycles. In the past, we met more monthly about that, but I really felt meeting weekly to kind of keep a pulse on that data and then to help guide them if they needed to make any, say, course corrections as they were going, help to increase our data.
I ask, in part, looking at last year, we had 32 different goals set. You had the math and literacy, the four different grades, and the four different schools. And of those goals that we set last year, we only met five of them. And this year, we've expanded the kindergarten literacy. I understand that. And so now there's 44 different goals that we have set, and we've only met 10 of them. And so that's kind of my question is when we achieved a 15.6% success rate last year and we've gone to a 22% success rate this year, I wonder if we need to do more or need to do something else? Now, certainly, I also have, I question, why are we going into subdomains in terms of our goals here? Why, you know, for the AVMR, you know, the forward number of sequencing at kindergarten plus addition or subtraction at first grade? We have the I Ready now. We're using the I Ready from first through third. And so I wonder, you know, from a psychometric standpoint, using the subdomains has horrible reliability. And so I go, why aren't we using measures that are consistent with how we are evaluating our programming anyways? What was the choice for, the logic for using subdomains?
Yeah, part of the AGR is really having specific goals for DPI about what we are going to meet. But you'll see too that we also were looking at I Ready, so it was an "and." So we have to look at I Ready and how are we doing proficient-wise with our students? And we also were looking at what are some of the specific goals that we want to see move because we know that, you know, you talked about math specifically. So when you look at forward number word sequence, and Julie Holmes could probably speak more to this if you'd like to share about that, but there are some pieces that if kindergartners have their forward number word sequence and they have that to five, they're going to be more successful as first graders. And then, so each of these were chosen very carefully because they're so critical to what students are going to need and be able to do in order to be successful as they move forward. So it's a look at the specific, and then also what does that mean to us as we're looking at the bigger I Ready score?
And then we can talk about what assessment we're going to use and whether we're using the overall assessment or the subdomains. That's one issue. Probably my larger overarching issue is that the AGR program is implemented to try to demonstrate a reduction in the achievement gap for low-income students. And so what I would anticipate seeing in our goals is not just overall, this is the rate. I would anticipate seeing, here's what happened in the low-income students versus this is what happens into the non-low-income students. That that is how you use that measure to kind of evaluate, are we reducing achievement gap? And there's nothing in our goals that evaluate that. And that's actually something that's written into the state statutes that we're supposed to be doing. Now, I appreciate from the DPI standpoint, all they ask of us is for the board to agree to some goals, and this is apparently what we agreed to, and so this is what we're submitting to them. But I kind of feel like going forward, if this is supposed to be reducing the achievement gap, our metrics, our evaluation of it should be considering, are we actually reducing the achievement gap? Because right now, the only way we can look at this and say we're reducing the achievement gap is if we believe kind of the no-child-left-behind logic of, we're just going to push everybody to 100%. And we know that's not happening. So I am struggling substantially with, are, do we have the right evaluation plan for this program? Are we measuring the right things? I know we're not measuring what state statutes ask us to measure. And so I just feel like we need to put more work into doing that going forward and then be able to truly monitor something consistently over time. I get, we went away from PALS, so you had to pick something else.
And we may have something else next year depending on when we hear about the state screener. So, and then we'll have another measurement as well, so.
So what I'm hearing though, I think, Tim, to your reference point, is probably good work for the education committee to be able to think through like, what is that, what is the evaluation process look like for this program or maybe just, you know, programming overall? I think that's something that we can shore up and look at historically, what we've done as far as our measurements, what are some areas that we can clean up? And, you know, that would be good work to be able to do, you know, over the summer, beginning of next year. So as we're bringing the program forward, we get to this time next year, we've got those shored up. Because those assessments are possible. So, yeah, so I would ask, you know, that would be, you know, good work for Dr. Brown, Dr. Coleman, and, you know, principals involved to be able to give some input into that. So, and certainly, your expertise and insight will be important as part of that process too. That'd be good.
Yeah, thank you.
It does look like we made tremendous progress in many, many areas, so that's very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was just going to add that I had the opportunity to meet with Amanda Patza at Jefferson this past year, and she assured me that there were lots of changes that were taking place in terms of laser-like focus on improving the reading achievement of the students there. And that seems to be reflected in at least some of the data. I also think it's important to look at, and we don't have, it wasn't part of this report, so I'm not being critical, but we did see improvement, for example, at Jefferson because a year ago on the state testing, I believe they were in the category of met few standards. They moved up at least one level, and I can't remember what that level is called. Meet standards? I think that's the one. So they pulled up the achievement of everybody in that school. But I agree with Mr. Hess, or Dr. Hess, we do need to look at disaggregated data. And when we get to the point where we look at the state test, we can certainly do that. But as with anything we do, we have to look at results. And there are some impressive results here. We also know that many of our students may not be getting the support they need at home in terms of language development before they come to kindergarten. And we know that there are discrepancies in terms of known vocabulary for some of our students. And the broader the vocabulary, the more likely they are to be successful moving forward in school. And having books in the home, having parents read to them, or other adults in the community who read to them, all make a difference. And that, those variables are not necessarily reflected in the report. But those are some things that, when we talk about engaging the community in our schools, may be some ways to bring in some volunteers to assist with those gaps in development. Parents are busy. We have a lot of single-parent families. And so if there's a way that we can engage parents and other volunteers in the schools, it may be a way to help. But as I said, I think there's some good data here in terms of, especially as I look at Jefferson, and I know there's some other data here too that are impressive, but we --
Webster Stanley also moved up in categories.
Very good.
Just like celebrate that.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for recognizing all the things and knowing that you talked to Amanda, then you hear about all those individual efforts that are happening at a school. And, yeah, it truly does take a village in the school to really take that concerted effort. So thank you for recognizing that.
Thank you.
Mr. Wright?
Oh, yeah, thank you for the report. As I was reading through it, we can use data in a lot of different ways. And certainly, we want to be continually improving on our processes. So I look forward to having those discussions at the education committee. But I saw a lot of increased growth, right? And having kids of my own, you know, they get tested at--
Sorry.
Oh, it's okay. They get tested at the beginning of the year, and then we measure their progress. Because we can't control, you know, where our kids come to us with what level they're at. What we control is where they, what level they leave at. And we often get, we want every kid to be proficient, right? Or advanced. But we can't not count or give credit for all the growth because that takes a lot of hard work too, you know, by a lot of people. And we had a lot of consistent growth. I mean, there's a lot of work to do. I looked, I guess we'll get into this later, but I looked a lot at the K through fourth grade numbers. But I think we'll always have more work to do. And I like that we have broad-based discussions as a board. Thank you for compiling this data and look forward to finding ways that we can continue to all work together to continue to help more children grow even more within our schools. So, thanks.
Continually to make it stronger. So thank you, all of you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Staffing results based on enrollment, Mrs. Conrad Peters.
Hi, good evening. Before you, you have a written staff report that looks at what our staffing results are, how we staffed based on student enrollment in K through five. And then in six through 12, it also is based on course requests or sections or courses that students were requesting at the secondary level. One key thing that I want to point out is that we did do staffing over a month earlier or completed the staffing process a month earlier. And this has been the work that has been done with HR and the business office to better align our staffing, our resources, and our budgeting to be earlier in the year. And this was one of those key pieces. So the Ashkosh area school district uses a formula-based staffing model. The formulas are listed there. It's one through 24 and 4K through, 4K through three, and then one to 27 and four through 12. And we just talked about our AGR schools, and that is a one to 18 ratio. And once again, we look at secondary schools, there are course requests that go with that as well. So we continue to align our students with our student needs, with our available resources, and we are finding efficiencies. You're going to see some of those efficiencies in staffing shown in the chart that you have on the second page. So on the second page are the data tables that I felt that we wanted to show you where we were with 22, 23 before we did consolidation, and then in 23, 24, which is this school year, and then where we are projected to be in the 24, 25 school year. I also want to note that I put two stars by your projected total enrollment number for the third Friday count because that hasn't happened yet, but is what we are tentatively projecting based on where students are enrolled in census, 4K kindergarten, et cetera. So those are projected numbers. So things I want to point out is that when we looked at the consolidations, you can see the impact of Vell Phillips Middle School in consolidating in the 23, 24 school year. And then you can see the impact of consolidation in the 24, 25 column when it comes to allocated classroom FTE. One thing we did learn is at the middle school level, when we started to do the one to 27 ratio, that we were quote-unquote "too tight" at grade six when it came to Vell Phillips Middle School. We were finding out that as families were moving into that attendance zone or attendance area, it seemed like everybody had a sixth grader. And so with that, we had to make sure that we had enough, we had enough room. So you're going to notice that we do have a bump in the 24, 25 allocation, and that's because we needed to correct the number of sections at Vell Phillips to make sure that we were not transferring students to other middle schools because we did not have enough sections of teachers in order to accommodate them. And then also, the third thing is you can see the ups and downs based on course enrollment or course requests at the secondary level in certain departments. But I do want to indicate that our next step when it comes to aligning budget, staffing, and resource allocation is to line, analyze staffing and FTE areas of instructional and student support services. Because what this represents right here is really looking at a teacher-to-student ratio, like how many, how many students are in front of a teacher in the elementary and secondary level? Where we need to start to really think about and right-size when it comes to our formulas is our actual support services. Are we, are we supporting students at the 10,000-student level for the district? Are we supporting them at the 9,000-student enrollment level? But also keeping in mind, we absolutely have needs, and we have student needs at specific schools, and we're going to have to adjust up and down for that. But that is really our next step when it comes to formula-based staffing.
Questions?
I have a question under E2. You addressed the large number of incoming sixth graders, and this E2 speaks to involuntary transfers of students from Vell Phillips to other middle schools.
Correct.
Especially at grade six. What's happening with those students who are now going into grade seven? Will they be welcomed into Vell Phillips, or will they be given the option of staying where they went for sixth grade? Or how will that work?
It is, well, first of all, we plan for them to all go back to seventh grade at Vell Phillips. And if they wanted to stay at the middle school that they started at, the families filled out an out-of-attendance-area application, and we actually granted those based on that. But we, we made sure that we had room for all students in their home attendance area.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Hess?
Couple of questions here. Just to kind of clarify for the public per se, you know, I looked at the DPI's website and their data for teachers, and it seemed to suggest that this present year, in terms of licensed teachers that we had employed, it was, I think, like 780, is that ballpark? And what you're describing here is roughly 480 in terms of classroom teachers that are in front of students every day basis, according to these formulas. So we're really talking about 300 other teachers that we're evaluating, and we're going to evaluate that based off the caseloads, right? That's what we're saying. Okay. And then, one other question is, we're looking at this in part because we want to right-size our staffing.
Correct.
From a budgetary perspective, if we lose teachers, we save money. So I got a question. In terms of, if I look at this, it looks like we're saying, in terms of these, it looks like you're proposing roughly six and a half teachers' reduction from last year to the next year, if these projections are--
Across elementary and secondary?
Across both of them, right.
Yes.
And so my, one other question is, in terms of Drew's projections of finances, have you already incorporated that? So you're already assuming that?
That was part of the rationale of moving all of this together?
Yep.
So it would all be included earlier.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
If I can clarify, so when you were talking, when you're referring to the DPI and we have the number that you quoted for teachers, remember that teachers are professionally licensed staff.
Right.
And so that, that could be school counselors, that could be social workers, that could be anybody that's a licensed, do you name saying, licensed staff member? That could be an instructional support teacher. So, so yes, that's exactly what we're saying that we're going to take a closer look at in the next budget cycle, staffing cycle. in the next budget cycle, staffing cycle. Correct.
Thank you very much. Very informative.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Next, we move into the public forum, and Dr. Davis is checking to see if we have speakers this evening.
We have nobody here.
We have no speakers this evening. So, we will move on to our workshops. Our first workshop is math achievement with Dr. Coleman and Mrs. Cole.
All right. Good evening to the board and members of our community who are listening tonight. Director Cole will begin our workshop with our math achievement. I want to just share my gratitude to all of our teachers, administrators, support staff, for the work and alignment that has gone into the results that we'll talk about tonight. So, while we certainly have continuing areas and opportunities to grow, we also do not want to miss celebrations that we also have with some of the growth that we've achieved. So, I want to express my gratitude before we begin our presentation again to our teachers who are on the front lines each day doing the work with our students, as well as our families who partner with us in this work. So, Director Cole, I will turn it over to you.
So, in the area of math achievement, this first slide just shows where we are as far as our star rating for our key performance indicator on math achievement. So, we are still at that two-star rating. This next slide shows where we landed at the end of this year based on our I-ready data, and this is reflecting grades 1 through 8. So, previous years prior to this current school year, only students in grades 3 through 8 took the I-ready. This year, we added grades 1 and 2. So, when you look at this chart, just keep in mind that we added two new grades to that I-ready. So, as you can see, we fell short of the district goal of 56% proficiency. And really, when you kind of look over time, our scores have really remained stagnant in math. This next slide just shows the proficiency at each of the grade levels in grades 1 through 8. And of course, like I said, grades 1 and 2, we did not use the I-ready assessment in previous years. So, again, you're going to see the same pattern of fairly, fairly flat scores. This next chart shows our students who come from families who are economically disadvantaged versus those who do not. Again, pretty flat. The next chart...
Can I ask a question? Can you go back one?
Yes.
Does the economically disadvantaged, or let me ask you a different way. Where does our refugee population fall into this?
That we do have, not specific to refugee population, but we do have our English learners on another slide.
Okay.
So, certainly, when we disaggregate our data, we know that we have students who are potentially in multiple groups. So, we might have students who are in the group of economically disadvantaged and might also have, be serviced through special education. Or it might be a student with refugee background who is also in a group of economically disadvantaged. So, there's definitely overlaps and intersecting groups.
Thank you.
This next slide shows the percentage of students proficient by race. So, again, relatively flat, although for, in most of our areas, we did see a slight increase and even a bigger increase for our students who identify themselves as Hispanic. The next slide shows our students who are serviced through special education versus students who do not receive special education services. And then here is our students who are serviced through our ESOL program versus students who are not in that program. The next slide shows the annual typical growth, which means the percentage of students who made one year's growth in one year's time. So, you can see those percentages for grades 1 through 8. And just to kind of give you a little bit of a benchmark, per, according to I-ready, the national average is usually right around 50%. So, in many of our grade levels, we're over that national average. And then when we look at the stretch growth, so this would be students taking more than a year's growth in a year's time. Again, we're kind of right in range with the national average, which is typically about a quarter to 30% of students. So, as far as key reflections, this data is not anything that I'm surprised by. You know, this year, my first year in this position, and really like learning and starting to put some different things in place, when we start to put different practices in place, there's usually a lag in the data, right? So, this year, we just started implementing the learning walks with principals and really building capacity in our principals to know what to look for when they're observing in a math classroom. And that, when they know what to look for, then they know how to provide that accurate feedback to teachers. So, we just started those towards the end of first semester this year in grade 3 through 5 classrooms. We are building and understanding with our teachers around equitable math teaching by leveraging that student-centered coaching. Kim Brown referred to that before with our AGR report. And then also, teachers are engaging in conversation and reading of the Taking Action text. So, that's a text that we've been using in professional development for the last year and a half. Another new thing this year is implementing the monthly math data meetings with principals to discuss student progress and responsive actions. So, again, those just started at the end of first semester this year. So, it was a great opportunity for us to learn like what works, what doesn't work, you know, what data is helpful for us to look at in order to be responsive to those student needs. And then second semester, as you know, we piloted and recommended the adoptions, the adoption of Bridge's 3rd Edition, which we feel will have the enhancements that are needed to really start to move our data forward. As far as our action plan moving forward for elementary maths, that we have grade levels that are going to be focusing on critical area standards, which are also aligned to schools Title I goals. So, you can see for each grade level on what they will be focusing on as far as foundational skills, to make sure that they have the foundational skills they need to be successful with the grade-level rigor in mathematics. We will continue implementing the learning walks to empower principals to give effective feedback. We will continue to build an understanding around equitable math teaching by leveraging, continuing to leverage that student-centered coaching, and continuing the study of those high-leverage practices from Taking Action. We will implement a revised math teaching, learning, and assessment expectations with improved monthly math team meetings and student-centered coaching cycles with the IST Math. So, we wanted to be very, very clear on what our expectations are for what teaching, learning, and assessment looks like in mathematics. And then those expectations are discussed, and planning is happening around student data during monthly math team meetings and those student-centered coaching cycles. And then, of course, we'll be implementing Bridge's 3rd Edition. And with that, staff members will go through a full day of professional development that will really re-ground them in the foundations of what effective teaching in mathematics looks like and what implementing the curriculum to fidelity looks like. And then Julie Holmes, our math coordinator, and I have created a three-year action plan for elementary math. So, kind of taking a look at where do we want to be in three years, and then what are those steps and those actions that are going to get us there? And then these are, Director Kiffmeyer was not able to be here tonight, but these are the reflections for secondary mathematics. So, they are working on common rubrics to score the summative assessments to ensure...
No.
I'm sorry.
Slide forward.
Yeah. I didn't. Common rubrics to score the summative assessments to really ensure that inner rate of reliability. They're calibrating those scoring rubrics on the assessments. Teachers are increasing the frequency of formative assessments and providing meaningful and timely feedback to students. Increasing student engagement through random groupings and using vertical spaces. And then exploring options for updating the 68 math instructional materials. And of course, as you know, the board did adopt illustrative math for next school year. And then, the action plan for secondary mathematics is to focus on engaging all students in math discourse, to implement rapid improvement cycles. So, they're going to be piloting those rapid improvement cycles at Vell Phillips. Again, implementing illustrative math with integrity. The secondary math coordinator will be attending the building math team meetings to help support that work. And then, learning walks with the secondary math coordinator with Jackie Kiffmeyer, the secondary director, and principals will begin next year as well.
So, when you hear the action plans reference both for elementary and secondary, as well as the reflections, you'll notice an emphasis on alignment and coordinated support for our teachers. So, when we talk about, well, we notice there are pockets of success and certainly great examples that we can find across our system where we see optimal performance in both student achievement and implementation of instructional strategies. And so, what we are intentional about doing as we move forward into next year and the subsequent years is aligning those practices across our system, making sure that we are spotlighting and identifying where those strategies are effective, and evolving practice through professional development, and then opportunities like student-centered coaching so that teachers have the capacity-building opportunities to develop their practice as well. So, as we increase support and reinforce alignment across our system, we're confident that the strategies and practices that we see working in what we call pockets or silos of excellence, that we'll be able to scale that across our systems. At this time, are there questions that Director Cole and I can answer about the math achievement data that we presented?
Dr. Herzog?
I'm not sure I have questions, but I'd like to make some comments. I'd like to commend both of you for coming into the Curriculum Department this year. And as your first year in that department, I know that both of you have been out in the schools, you've observed best practices, you've observed perhaps opportunities where we can improve. And I really appreciate your coming forward with being able to tell us what's, what's happened in terms of the reflections of what took place this past year and where we go from here. I found the last two curriculum, excuse me, the Education Committee meetings to be extremely rich in terms of some of the comments that were shared, where there was a teacher who noted that we had stagnant middle-level math scores. And then, in further discussing that, and that led to the, a discussion about an adoption of a new, of new instructional materials at the middle level, it became clear to me that part of the problem for our, our staff and for our students has been that we needed an update in instructional materials that aligned with what we were expecting as far as outcomes from students, and now we'll have that. I think all of us, one common thing about this board is that every one of us has been a K-12 student at some point, and we've probably all been in a situation where we were tested on something, and we didn't realize that was going to be on the test. Or we all probably took driver education at some point, and we knew exactly what we were going to be assessed on. And that needs to be clear with our students. So, I see that you have put together a plan here that provides for defining the outcomes, which could be described as goals and standards. You've identified instructional materials that need to be implemented with fidelity, that is, in the manner in which they were intended to be implemented to get the results we're looking for, tying that and aligning that to professional development, and then providing the principals with the skills they need to coach their teachers as instructional leaders, giving them the feedback they need. So, when you align all those, the outcomes, the instructional materials, the professional development, and the coaching by the principals, and the involvement of the directors and coordinators at the elementary and secondary levels, we should see an improvement in our scores. Not simply because the score is important, but because there's a child behind each one of those, and we have a guiding principle of students first, and we need to remember that. Every one of those children is important. And so, I see that you have provided with us with an overview of how to get there. And Mr. Miller had provided us with a number of goals related to reading and math when he did his presentation about two weeks ago that I would see would dovetail or align with what you've outlined here. So, I'm assuming you're going to be working closely with him and the staffs to make sure that we address those 30-some goals that he had presented. So, thank you.
Yes.
Any comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
Can we go back to the slide? On my slides, it's slide 10? No, sorry. 11? I think we're one off. It's the stretch growth.
Stretch growth, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, that's 11. It's in the upper right-hand corner.
And there's, it's 12, I think. When I look at these numbers, and we're, as you said, kind of stagnant, the national average is normally 25 to 30%. What, what does that mean?
Meaning, when you take the, nationally, the students who take the I-ready assessment, and it's not given in every school, right? But of the students who take the I-ready assessment across the United States, typically the average percentage of students who make their stretch growth falls between that 25 to 30% each year. That's typically sort of the range that it falls in.
Okay. That makes sense. I guess I have a question as to how, and I always hate this question, because people always ask us how we compare to our peers, and then we look at Nina and Kimberly, and it's not apples to apples because they're different-sized schools and different numbers of students and stuff. But I am kind of curious to see if this is a national trend or a state trend, or like, how are other schools doing with their math scores? Are they stagnant also?
I have not looked at our other schools in the FEA. I do know that our scores fall below the state average. So, it's definitely, I mean, we know we need to do better.
Yeah.
So, we know that we have growth. But I haven't specifically, and I don't even know if all of the FEA schools use the I-ready as an assessment tool. So, I haven't specifically...
Yeah, so we can't even benchmark ourselves against...
I don't have access to their scores.
Yeah, of course not.
It's not something that's like publicly reported necessarily.
Yeah, thank you.
Mrs. Loji?
Yeah, I have a follow-up question to the national average. So, annual typical growth, the average is 50%, and stretch growth is 25. So, is that a total? The 25 is not represented in the 50, correct? So, a total of 75% of students either grow a year or more?
The total in the stretch growth is included in the annual typical growth. So, those students have met the annual typical growth and then...
In stretch.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to say.
So, we have a lot of work to do.
Yeah. Which percentage, if it was 25 or 50% of students nationally that don't? Okay, thank you.
Dr. Heston?
Boy. You know, when I was campaigning, I think the thing that most people brought up to me is we have to see better results in our achievement. And Ms. Cole, you know, I, hearing that from you really made me cringe when you said, "This doesn't surprise me," in part because I go, in January, we were told to expect that the goal was to see a 10% increase in the mathematics results in terms of the forward exam. Except, this is a nationally-given computerized adaptive test, and so the standard here tends to be lower. That means, and we know that this is highly correlated, and the subdomains are highly correlated with the forward exam... correlated with the forward exam. So our anticipation would be for us to see that in the forward exam, we would expect to see something even further than ten percent in this. And to see nothing is really difficult. When we were just told in January, we're shooting for ten percent in the forward exam. We should have seen more for that. So to see that just five months later, this is disappointing, and at some point, the community is going to be beyond frustrated. My other struggle is, at some point, this board has to start making decisions, has to start doing something beyond. We, I've heard for the last couple of years, us talking about accountability and talking how, oh, we put a target into board policy for literacy. And that's a start, it is. And that's something that we can take to all the teachers and the principals and point to that. But at some point, accountability has to incorporate what happens when we either achieve or fail to achieve that goal. And that's where we've got to start deciding. I appreciate, I want to hope that this is going to lead us to better results, but at some point, we have to go beyond wanting to hope and actually see it. And to continue to wait to year end to see these results and not make course correction is very difficult. And so I hope there's something more in here about, I don't necessarily have to see it in here, but I hope that you guys are considering what happens, what are you looking at throughout the year to make course corrections? Because if we see this next June, I don't know what to do anymore. When you start talking accountability at that point, and we see the same thing, I'm at a loss for words, and it has to become a pretty harsh outcome.
Well, and we see the same, we have the same urgency, right? And so like, this is extremely disappointing for us as we're moving forward. And if you look back at the action steps, part of the action steps are to be able to have more frequent, you know, feedback and data that we can be more responsive to in the classroom. So having principals be part of those walkthroughs, being able to have those cycles, those coaching cycles, like those are the action steps to ensure that we have responsiveness as we're moving forward. Very similar to what we're doing in reading, scaling that up now into, you know, into our math programming. And with our new structure, right, and Ms. Cole's leadership in that structure, Mr. Coleman's leadership in his position, like that changes the game for us as far as our ability to be able to be responsive to the feedback that we're getting in. We have to build those structures, right? And appreciate the board's investment in the new curriculum resources that will have better alignment and the professional development plan that's coming up on those things. But those are all responses to our urgency to make sure that we do make progress on this. So I just want to make sure that it's clear, like, we're not saying, well, you know, we're disappointed, but, you know, not much we can do. But we know we can do more, and we built that within the system. So I just want to make sure that comes across as part of the.
Board of Order, I have a question. I could be mistaken, but I don't remember the board being told in January that we would expect a ten percent increase, and Dr. Hess was not on the board during that time. So I'm wondering if that is a correct statement.
You want me to pull it up?
I don't remember, I don't recall.
I don't recall exactly from the, from a January board meeting. I don't know.
I think what Dr. Hess might be referring to is the forward exam projections that we had, and just knowing that we didn't lower, we weren't on target or trending toward meeting that number, but we didn't lower or change that. And so at that point, I believe it was at ten percent.
It was, I think in November, we saw the forward results. In December, we get then the statewide report card, which is a composite of the forward.
Right.
And I think at that point, we'd said, hey, Dr. Davis, we need to see an action plan. What's going to happen? And it was there in that action plan, included many of the elements here.
Yeah.
That one of the first elements was saying, this is what we're going to do this year. And then the following year, up by five percent kind of thing. And that's where I go, I just saw it. I'm struggling with that. And so my follow-up question would be, I'm curious, and I'm sorry, I just substantially looked at this today, and maybe you can answer this, and maybe you have to come back to me on this. But I go, what elements that you are showing me here are kind of new and novel relative to what was in that action plan? Are there more things that we're proposing to implement here?
So one of the things, oh, go ahead.
Let me just start. So what we knew coming into this, and we appreciate Dr. Davis's leadership on establishing a proven process that increases the likelihood that students will achieve proficiency. We knew that across our system, we did not have a guaranteed proven process that establishes a high likelihood that all students would achieve proficiency. And so part of what our work has been this year, and what Director Cole will speak to, is the development of a proven process that we can put in place to say, if we have this sequence, this amount of professional development, this approach to teaching math and the use of these strategies, this provides a process that we can, I don't want to use the word guarantee, but at least we, it increases the likelihood that the application of that process will result in student proficiency. And we spent this year conducting observations, conducting learning walks, determining what processes have been effective and where we see processes that aren't effective. And again, it's not a reflection of how hard teachers and administrators are working, but we just have not seen those processes produce desired results. And so the action plan and the strategies Director Cole will speak to are examples of what we've identified as proven actions, proven elements of the new process that we will have in place that will increase the likelihood of student proficiency.
One of the questions, Dr. Hess, that you asked was like, how are we kind of monitoring along the way so we can be more responsive, knowing that like the I-ready, we're only taking that three times a year? So Julie Holmes, our math coordinator and the math IST team, really took a look at what we would be looking at after the teaching of every single unit in Bridges Third Edition next year. And so we will be pulling the standards that students are expected to be proficient with by the end of each unit. We will be pulling the data on whether or not students met those standards at the end of each unit that they were expected to meet, and those are aligned with the state standards, which are the standards that are tested on the forward exam. So we will be able to see at the end of each unit which students were proficient, which students weren't, and then immediately develop plans to get the students who are not proficient to that proficient level. And we didn't have that data or that information or a way to pull that this year. So we learned a lot this year from just starting those regular math data meetings. Now we actually have a plan in place to be able to pull meaningful data that will really help us to be responsive for students who are not demonstrating that proficiency. Mr. Wright?
So, yes, we have a lot of years of history and data, but I'm correct, it was both of your first years in this role, right? So anyone that starts a new role has to get acclimated with, you know, with the culture and climate. So based upon that, what things make you both optimistic? Because obviously, everyone in this room, everyone in this whole community has a deep, or should have a deep passion for as many kids as possible to be successful, right? We all want the same outcome. So what are, you know, some of the positive things that you guys have learned and observed, and that make you hopeful that more, more of our children are going to be successful? Because that's what we all want. You know, that's the bottom line, bottom line thing, goal.
What makes me optimistic, number one, is your support for the Bridges Third Edition. I think the enhancements that make it more user-friendly for teachers, as well as the enhancements in best practice and a focus on equity, I think will be very important in this work. Another thing that makes me optimistic is the work that I've been able to do with principals, where we're going in together as a team, along with our math expert Julie Holmes, to observe math learning and really provide that critical feedback. I have learned so much in that process, and I know our principals have too. So continuing to team with them to really build their capacity to provide that accurate feedback on math instruction, I think is also going to be a game changer. And then I believe that the professional development plan that we have laid out around rigor and engagement and what that looks like across the board for our students, that we are going to be implementing with our teachers this coming year, also provides me with great optimism.
I would copy everything Director Cole just shared. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you, and be bold and not afraid to try new things, because all we want to do is see more kids be successful. And we have hard conversations on a regular basis about that, right? But we all, as a district and community, I think are on the same page with wanting to see as many kids as we can be successful. So thanks for the report. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, reading achievement. Dr. Brown, Dr. Coleman.
And in the same regard, as I share my gratitude for our teachers and administrators and all of those who take a part in ensuring that our students are engaged in quality instruction in the area of math, I share my same gratitude for all of you as board members, our administrators, teachers, and staff members who have really rallied around our work with reading achievement. And so again, we have some opportunities for growth that we'll celebrate, and then also being honest and transparent about the work that we need to do going forward. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Brown and Dr. Kuap for their presentation.
Excellent, thank you. All right, so starting out with our KPI, we are at a star rating of two at this point yet, and working on things. So let's get into the report, though. So our spring I-ready diagnostic, so a reminder that, you know, where we are and what our target is. We didn't quite meet our target, but there's still some really great celebrations. So as we look at the reading proficiency in grades one through eight, we are up three point five percent on I-ready, and every grade level increased in that proficiency, which you'll see in the next slide. And then if you take a look at where we were, reading proficiency in grades one, eight, is up eight percent since 2020. So we have some increases that are happening, which are some beautiful celebrations and really, again, celebrating the things that our teachers are implementing. In this next slide, it is our percent of students who are proficient. So you can see there's been some increase in all, but we really wanted to highlight third grade because they did meet the key performance indicator in literacy, and we feel like there's some really promising proficiency results for grades one through three as When you look for our growth for economically disadvantaged, we're moving in the right direction, but we have more work to do. We had some growth for our students who identify as Hispanic and Asian, but we have more work to do in the other areas. This was, our students with disabilities, this was an area that is a point of concern for us. So one of the things we looked at is when we had dug into the data and saw this, we just had a data dig with all of our administrator, or elementary administrators, and our IST came to that. And it was really looking at the data pieces, putting in plans to be proactive for the fall, as well as taking a look at how can we schedule, make our schedules work so that there is an opportunity for teachers to come together, meaning regular ed teachers and our teachers who are our EL teachers or our special ed teachers, to truly co-serv or co-plan with one another in order to co-serv. And we did call some attention to special ed and some of the pieces that we need to work on. So it's something we did notice, and that was something that we've already just met with everybody on June tenth to try to get behind that. And here is, again, our non-English learners, and there is, it's moving in the right direction, but lots of growth to do yet. When we look at our annual typical growth, we felt our proficiency has not caught up with our growth yet. You'll see grades two, three, and five, we believe, is the celebration. And then what we really wanted to do is really let you know that when Dr. Kuap and I and Dr. Coleman dug into the data down to the teacher level, we have individuals, teachers, who added eighty-nine percent students at proficiency, and grade level teams, meaning their full team, were in the high seventies. And so there are some beautiful things happening in our schools, and that's sometimes not seen here, but want to lift the teachers who are, they're doing so many things behind the scenes in order to have those type of results. And then here is our stretch growth. As Erin Cole had shared, national is twenty-five to thirty-three percent, so you can see where we are with that. We also wanted to let you know there were teacher teams in each of the schools, which were as high as fifty-seven percent of students meeting their stretch growth. And it was truly fun to look at students who were in fourth grade but coming in at a first grade level, and now they are at a fourth grade level. So there was some significant things happening in our classrooms. And so just don't want to lose sight of the hard work that's happening behind the scenes.
And we absolutely have talked with those teachers and calling them out, and finding out what they're doing. We want to get behind some of this really incredible growth. I do want to just remind for that stretch growth, I know we've probably talked about it, but really, the I-ready data, the research that they've done with, for the national data, has shown that students who meet their stretch growth two years in a row are most likely to be right on target, to be proficient at their grade level. Even making the stretch growth in one year makes a significant difference. And we had a chance to meet with our I-ready people to show us that data. So we have a, and you will hear in our monthly meetings, we talk very much about the importance of that stretch growth, and what does that mean? And how can we differentiate to ensure that stretch growth happens? So we really want a year's growth for every student, but for students that are not yet at grade level, we are talking stretch growth. That's really where our focus really is. So when it comes, looking at our data and our reflections on this, is that, you know, some of the things we did have in place this year that we felt really supported some of the growth that we've made is that our first semester K-two professional development was nothing new. It deepened the application of these high-leverage foundational practices that really was needed for that science of reading to fill in some gaps in our classrooms. So phonological awareness, letter identification, and phonics was a focus with, and the transfer in to using that in their connected reading and writing text. So that was first semester for K-two, three, five, to support really that language comprehension and vocabulary especially, which is, was highly correlated to how students do for their comprehension. We did a semester of development around high-leverage strategies for word study, including syllable types. That's not something that has been a part of what teachers have done for figuring out new words, morphology, and context clues. So those were what we did, and we really embedded it in context of what teachers are already doing, which is their interactive read aloud, and how to embed this within that and other contexts. So that was our three, five work. And then we continued our monthly formative, common formative assessment process for, with those rapid cycles. I really believe we had bigger growth this year because it was our second year in that. It wasn't so new. Teachers, they got behind it. We made some changes based on the data. And. We made some changes based on the data and, and we really were able to start to target to look at this for every kid and, and really even our, our meetings evolved over time where our principals came of, and here's the plan I'm already putting into action because this is what we noticed in, in the data. So, so those are the reflections. And then when it comes to our action plan, because we do have work to do, and is number one, very exciting that we will be piloting core knowledge, language arts, and that will be piloting field testings, as we're using just one, is, will be field testing that in grades K5. All 11 schools will have field testing and that typically two, two grade levels in each school. And, and actually the number is 68. We have 68 elementary teachers who wanted to be a part of this, this field test and are excited and are ready to go with that. They already have a digital access to what, what it is that they may be teaching or they will be teaching next year for those that want to sneak peek into that. We, our professional development will, will, I'm very excited, will focus on engagement and rigor across all the content areas, but they're using the curriculum materials. So monthly professional development for teachers that are field testing, CKLA, will actually bring their materials and they will be embedding the engagement and rigor techniques right in to the lessons that they are doing because teaching practice matters. So the curriculum is going to be amazing for them, but the teaching practice has got to, to ensure that we have engagement and rigor. We'll continue with learning walks and, and base those on the high levels of engagement and rigor during the literacy block. We just looked at data with our principals on June 10th and many of them had already dug into it and we're doing more with it already, getting ready for next year. But where, where does coaching need to take place because of the data that we see moving forward? We are proactive in that, that helped us this year and I think we're in even a better place going into next year. And then we're going to continue to use common formative assessments that will change most likely for our CKLA teams and what that assessment and how that will be built in, but we will look at that on a monthly basis to ensure that we can pivot and, and ensure that we're working with our students.
Okay. And Dr. Coleman, do you want to speak to the secondary?
Yes, and just our secondary reflections emphasize the professional learning that we provided our teachers around the implementation of Study Sync, which is our language arts curriculum that we're using in grades six through eight, and then also professional learning around instructional strategies, specifically using small group targeted instruction to make that learning more rigorous, more engaging, and customized to support student needs based on where they're scoring with their proficiency. And then those small group instructions, instruction opportunities are informed by how students are performing in their common formative assessments. So that third bullet point there is just developing the ways that we use common formative assessment data to provide learning opportunities for our students that are targeted to meet their learning needs. So that's work that we've approached this year, work that we'll deepen and get stronger with as we move into next school year. Pretty much the same thing that I just shared, what our steps are going forward for next year.
And so from what we've shared, I mean, for both literacy and math, we just want to continue focusing on growth and prioritizing closing gaps and achievement gaps across math and literacy for our students in the lowest quartile of proficiency and growth. Schools will increase partnerships with families and community partners and continue anti-bias training for staff to reduce our achievement and opportunity gaps in literacy and math for students who make up the lowest quartile of achievement and growth. We do think there's a promising indicator of growth in grade three literacy and teacher practices and foundational skills in grades K2. And then to continue to leverage student-centered coaching cycles for math and literacy because we have seen that impact and we can see it right in the scores after, after a cycle. So it's pretty amazing.
Okay. Thank you. Comments, questions?
And I'll just add one thing just to the key communications. Punchline is reading scores are up, right? So three and a half percent over this past year, 8% over the last five years. So, and that's a credit, again, to, to your leadership, Dr. Brown and Dr. Kuap. Up to this point, Dr. Coleman is certainly coming in to be able to provide some more perspective. And this is a result of the investment that this board has made over the last couple of years to have a good foundation as we're moving forward. And as we're moving, as we're looking at the future then, again, I appreciate this board's continued support around Study Sync and CKLA as we're, as we're moving into the future, because we really feel like we've got a solid foundation now. And with our internal processes of being able to be responsive in real time, similar to like we talked in math, we're a little more developed in reading than we are in math, so, so we would expect to be able to see some of this, some of this progress as we're moving forward. So I just want to congratulate you on that, on that work. And the theme that keeps coming up for me as I meet regularly with, with this team is just around consistency, right? And that we have, we have continued pockets of excellence, but our ability to scale up and continue to bend that trajectory on our, our reading scores, similar to math, but it's just to be able to have consistency across classrooms. And our ability to be able to communicate that clearly, be able to get data in our teachers' hands and having, building their confidence and their skill set to respond accordingly is going to be really important. But, but I just want to thank you guys for your work and congratulations on that.
Mrs. Coleman?
I had a question on slide 22, please. It's 22 on mine, so maybe 21 or 23 on yours, we're off by one. The English learner versus non-English learners. So most of our slides are kind of stagnant, right? And then I, when I was looking at that slide, I was like, what's going on with the English learners going up and down? Any insight?
Are you referring to 2021 and then 2022?
Yeah, and I would, I would expect our non, I would respect, expect that to be switched, the non-English learners having more of a fluctuation, but maybe I'm, I'm just misreading that.
So, so a couple of things for context, comparing 2021 to where we are in present day would be the amount of, the growth of students who receive English language learning services from 2021 to now has tremendously increased. And so we certainly are providing more services to students who are in need of that. So that is one explanation that we believe exists for why we see the decrease.
Okay.
It's not necessarily a decrease in performance, but an increase in the number of students who need that support.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Could you by chance give us a basic understanding of how much that number's increased as far as English being second language or how many students we have that are learning, just learning English when they come here and then being, being given this test? And what, what do those numbers look like?
Yeah, and so we'll, we'll provide a more detailed report in the fall, but what I'll share is we increase our numbers for students who receive ESOL services by more than 100 students each year. And that has been an increase over the last five years. Another layer in that is not just students who are receiving those language services, but also students with refugee background and just some of the experiences that they're bringing with them. So in addition to needing potentially language services, there's also social, emotional support and wellness services that are also needed, just based on some of the conditions that they may have experienced before coming to us. And as our previous ESOL coordinator shared in the fall, we anticipate that number will increase just as we think about globally what's happening and how Wisconsin is welcoming students who, and families who have refugee background. So it's certainly a number that we will see increase and a program that we'll see increase as we're supporting more students with those unique needs.
It's, you know, and it's wonderful work that we're doing as a district in my opinion for, to help kids learn, you know, that have, that have come here from all over the world. You know, we're very, becoming a very diverse community. And as a district, we're teaching them, you know, a new language. And then at the same time, we're also teaching them how to become, to get to the point hopefully where they're proficient in math and English, you know? And, and I think the community should appreciate that and the community will reap the rewards for that down, down the, down the road. But, so, thank you.
I have a question. It's a leading question. Talk to me about the correlation between an increase in reading skills and scores to potential increases in math scores.
Would you like to take it or I can?
Go ahead.
All right, so we know that an increase in reading scores, not only, so much of our math, we know that there is an expectation that students are proficient in reading. There are many students who get stuck or even tripped up on what they're supposed to do when they aren't clear on the directions, they aren't clear on some of the word problems or which language that they have to encounter in mathematics instruction. We also know that there's a confidence measure that occurs when students are more proficient in literacy that translates to other subject areas like math and like science. And so we know that when students are more proficient in literacy, that that confidence and ability to use those literacy skills to understand directions, to decipher what they're being asked in a word problem, for example, that that also increases when, with increased literacy skills. So we anticipate as we see our literacy, literacy scores and skills increase, that we'll also see math scores and skills increase also.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Dr. Hess?
I think I like to celebrate successes. Statistician in me struggles with some things that I was, I was talking about, like the AGR program. For us to evaluate, are we improving things? We need to have a commonized assessment given to a similar group over a period of time and then we can evaluate, are we succeeding? And part of my struggle with the AGR program was that we changed the assessment. And so now when you look at the data points, it's tough to tell, are we making progress per se in this setting? And I fully admit that you guys have been transparent and said, okay, we're now looking at grades one through eight because we brought eye-ready in, in grades one and two. But when you compare the 43.5% last year to 47%, well, in this case, I can't make that comparison because it's not the same cohort. And when I factor out that cohort, that success diminishes down to a point where I'm going, it's not a statistically significant result. And so I'm, I'm optimistic, I am.
It's a, it's a great point and we're, we're digging into that too with that cohort. There's something we, we're even looking at. We believe there might be a rigor from third grade because we, the students in third grade like have made great, but we believe there may be a rigor issue for, with our curriculum in fourth grade and because we should have seen a bigger bump. Like I totally expected that. So yes, I, I wholeheartedly agree with you.
I think, I think across most of these though, the, the one thing I appreciate that we have seen the disaggregated data. And at the very end here, you talked about that we want to do things to reduce the achievement gaps. At some point, I would kind of like to hear more, what are those things that are actually going to reduce the achievement gaps? Because when I look at those gaps over time, I'm going, I don't know that we've been successful in that yet. And I know that that's part of the reason we got the equity coordinator in here, that's part of the equity plan. We need interventions to also do that too. And I know you guys are well aware of it, but I just want to say, we need to do that too, that all of that is important to all of us on this board. I appreciate that you've given us a lot of data. I want to see more. I can't imagine everybody else wants to see more, but you know, we're doing some good things, but gosh, I, I just hope we can do better soon. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Dr. Herzak?
Thank you. I, I really was keyed in on, keyed in on the key communication point, number one, continuing to be aware of the urgency. I do feel a sense of urgency. There's a child out there behind every one of those scores and we have to care about each of the children, so that's important to me. I also was reflecting earlier about a couple of things beyond the academics of reading and math and all the efforts that you have put into that in terms of...
Thank you.
I know, for example, at all levels, but I've seen this in posters and wall communications at North High School, the effectiveness of attendance efforts in getting students to school. We can do a much better job with our students in terms of their success if we can get them to school and get them highly engaged. And then I also wonder about the effectiveness of the conscious discipline and the conflict resolution programs so that we can have students behave in better ways so they're more receptive to learning and also so that we can reduce suspensions, whether that's in or out of school. We, they may, their parents will send the best children they have every day to us. We have to keep them in school. So having them in a detention room or an in-school suspension room or suspending them out of school is not helping them to learn. So somehow we have to figure out how to help them want to engage more in what we're doing with them through instructional practices probably, so that they can be there and can, can move forward. So we can't lose sight of some of those other efforts beyond all the good things that you're doing in terms of instructional materials and strategies and working with principals and so on. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Carolyn?
I just want to acknowledge that there was a 3.5% increase and that's not nothing. So thank you for that. That is a small celebration. Do we wish it was higher? Yes, we all wish it was higher, but at least we're headed in the right direction. So thank you for that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We move on to the consent resolution agenda. The consent agenda, the board's been furnished with background material on each agenda and was discussed in a previous meeting. It'll be act on one vote without discussion. Is there a motion? So, second.
Right, Carolyn?
Yeah.
Call the roll when you have a moment.
Selaji?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Dewitt?
Aye.
Herzak?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. An individually considered resolution, approval of updates to policy 2210, Curriculum Department. Dr. Coleman?
All right, thank you, Madam President. The reason why I pulled this or why I asked for this policy to be pulled is because there are a number of curricular changes and instructional material changes that we've asked the board to consider and approve. And this policy, I think, is an important policy just for the board to be aware of. And so I ask for it to be individually considered mainly for informational purposes only so that there's information about the requirements by which curriculum plans and courses of study, including adopted instructional materials, are to be evaluated. Additionally, this policy was, is considered to inform board members about the frequency for reviewing the processes used to evaluate district curriculum plans. In this policy, the language indicates at least five years. Recommend three years, but that's still at least five years. And so anyway, there are more details will be shared at an upcoming education committee meeting on June 17th about the processes that we'll use to proactively gather information to monitor the impact and to make improvements. But this is certainly an important policy as we approach the implementation of new math and reading instructional materials and curriculum programming, both at the elementary and secondary level.
Motion? We need to have a motion in a second or discussing this.
Motion.
Second.
Hess and Selaji, yeah.
Any discussion?
Let me say it all over again. All right.
Any discussion? Good, call the roll.
Ray?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Dewitt?
Aye.
Herzak?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
Selaji?
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Announcements?
Yes, I have an announcement. Sorry, that snuck, snuck up on me. Tonight, I handed our board clerk a letter that was actually addressed to the board president, Wyman, that I will be resigning effective June 28th because I have accepted a job in my hometown to be the elementary school... a job in my hometown to be the elementary school counselor there. So it was just an opportunity that came up that was both exciting and hard because I love the Oshkosh community. I have loved serving on this board. My children have had amazing experiences in our schools with absolutely phenomenal educators and all of that will be deeply missed. I just, I haven't lived near family for a lot of years, so that's an exciting thing to look forward to.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You'll be so missed.
So missed.
And have done wonderful things as well.
Thank you.
So I will be here for two more weeks. They're not quite rid of me yet.
Sounds good.
We're good with that.
Okay, we are going to adjourn to executive session. We're reconsidering the employment, promotion, compensation, performance evaluation...
Point of order? I think we forgot future agenda items. Not that I have any.
I'm sorry. I scratched it off. Request our future agenda items.
None for me.
Looks like none. Perfect.
None for me.
Okay, let's adjourn to executive session, considering the employment, promotion, compensation, performance evaluation data of another public employee over which government bodies jurisdiction exercise responsibility for a discussion of two personnel issues and number two, delivering and negotiating the purchase of public properties. So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Carlin and Ray?
Ray.
Ray?
Ready?
Wyman?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Dewitt?
Aye.
Hes?
Aye.
Selagi?
Aye.
Ray? Aye.
You can have the chair to adjourn to the session.
Thank you.